Good afternoon. This is the session on development of a watershed-based plan in Merle's Inlet. I'm the moderator, Amy Bennett. I'm the PD Watershed Manager at DEHEC. And I'd like to introduce our first speaker, Delaney Faircloth. He works with DEHEC and is a 319 grant coordinator. And this session will be a little different. We won't be sticking to the time schedule, so if you need to leave to attend another session, please just exit quietly at the appropriate time. And we will be taking our break at 3:15. Delaney?
Obviously, the title of the afternoon is focusing on Merle's Inlet and on non-point source pollution, different projects, monitoring, all those types of things that are going on there. What I want to do is just give you a quick overview of, most of you know what, of course, non-point source pollution is, but still just want to do a quick overview and then kind of get into our grant program, because that's how we, through the 319 grant program, that's how we're able to administer and get different projects like the one at Merle's Inlet that Dan's going to be talking about. You always have to start out with a quote, so I found this one from Munna Leopold. I knew it was Aldo Leopold's son, but I didn't realize that he was the first chief geologist for the USGS and really changed the way we look at water, I guess. But, you know, just a really apropos quote. So what is MPS pollution? Kind of the short of it is, you know, it's what doesn't come out of a pipe. Common things are stormwater permits, things that aren't covered by stormwater permits, ag permits, mining permits, MS4 permits, anything like that. It's the non-point source that really just implies that it's hard to figure out where it's coming from, type of thing. Just some examples, non-point source is also called runoff or sheet flow pollution. And just some common sources, failing septics, land clearing activities, again, these are non-permitted ones, maybe smaller, you know, not big subdivisions, that type of thing, pet waste, wildlife, agriculture, forestry, which kind of by definition are land clearing. And sometimes storm drains in older subdivisions, maybe before the modern permitting era, or some small areas that could be an issue, small town areas. So what do we have here in South Carolina in terms of, what are the pollutants? Well, pretty much the common ones that most people have, we have the bacteria, we have excess nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus, some of the heavy metals, the greases and oils, some of the toxic chemicals, pretty much the standard type things. But the results are what's important. Like you see with the yellow sign, the shellfish contamination sign, that's something we'll be talking about with Merle's Inlet is, you know, the E. coli or I guess it's entercaucus. You know, the bacteria, the shellfish beds closed. Obviously, it's bad for the environment, but it's bad for the people who enjoy taking their kids out there, collecting some oysters or for the oyster, the guys that collect them. And also our swimming advisories. We have a list, and all this is on the web, where we go through, we monitor places where, you know, parks that have swimming in a river, that type of thing. So those are two of the things that really affects. So what can be done about it in South Carolina? Well, that's where the grant program comes in. It's called the 319 Grant Program because that's the section of the Clean Water Act that funds the program. Each year, we get money from EPA and we go through the grant process. It has to be at least once a year, and in the past, every now and then, they've done it a couple times, but usually it's just once a year. So what's available and all out there? Well, it is annually, like I said. We have hundreds of water monitoring stations all through the state, on the coast, and any place, one of those stations where it doesn't meet water quality standards, theoretically, that's a place a project could take place. And we have identified a lot of this stuff. We have over 160 developed watershed plans, actually 160 that have been implemented to some degree. And the watershed-based plan, as we're going to be getting into a little bit later on, some of the other speakers, that's kind of the overarching guiding document. Every grant has to have a watershed-based plan that identifies the pollutant sources, what can be done about them, milestones, that type of thing. And then from there, a specific 319 grant project proposal is developed, and then that's what's submitted to us, and it goes through the review process. Now, we do have what we call some priority watersheds, but those are just areas where we like to try to do projects, but we do them statewide. We do them wherever we can find partners and there's a need from a water quality point of view. Because it's all about partnerships with this program, with the grantees. My best management practices, and that's kind of the heart of our program. We find an issue, failing septic tanks, we have a lot of projects that are working with that. I was talking with a lady the other day on the middle saluda, and the lady is from, you know, me to the camera under 50 feet, and then there's the middle saluda, and her septic doesn't work at all. So obviously, that's a problem. So they can fix things like that. Sometimes a lot of fencing from agriculture runoff, keeping the livestock off the streams. But, so BMPs, I mean, that's, that's the heart of it right there. And that has to be identified in the watershed-based plan and then in the project proposal itself. But just a few examples, livestock out of streams, pet waste stations, rain gardens, a lot of things y'all are familiar with. Let me give you a few pictures here. So an alternate watering source over here on the top right, and kind of a hardened stream crossing water area there between the fence. And this is a hardened feeding area right here in the bottom one. Those are some typical agriculture ones. These are some others. It's kind of more of an educational one where the sewer is here, just letting people know that, you know, what goes in the sewer connects to the, to the stream. Seems pretty obvious to us, but a lot of folks don't put those connections together. Compost shed at the top, and of course, the fencing to keep the livestock out of the streams. So those are all common things that 319 grant funds can be used for. Pretty much, almost anybody can be apply, it's group, you know, it can't be an individual, obviously, but any organized group, nonprofits, councils of governments, these are the type of people we're looking to spearhead as a grantee, the 319 projects. This is kind of the application that goes out once a year. We have a certain due date that comes in, then it's reviewed by a committee. None of us on the 319 staff are on the committee. We have some outside agency people also, so they're the ones who look at it and decide if it's going to be funded or not. Typically, the projects are 12 to 36 months. And, you know, we'd love to have people involved. A lot of people here probably already know about that, but, you know, we're always looking for good partners and stakeholders. I've got cards, I'll be around later on if anybody needs. So that's just kind of the quick nuts and bolts of, you know, what we do with the non-point source program at DEHEC. And as Freddie Fish likes to say, "Only you can prevent MPS pollution." I had to come up with something corny there. All righty, thank you.
I will point out that 319 funds were utilized in developing this watershed-based plan in Merle's Inlet. And our next speaker, Daniel Newquist, from the Waukesha Mall Regional Council of Government, was involved in securing that grant and helped to take care of the paperwork of the grant, I would say. But he's going to come and talk to us about his role in this watershed plan development.
Okay, my name is Dan Newquist. I'm an environmental planner with the Waukesha Mall Regional Council of Government's office in Georgetown, South Carolina. Definitely happy to attend this year's conference. I attended it one time previously in 2010, so it's definitely nice to have an opportunity to come back here this year and present about some of the work our agency has been involved with the past few years. I did have a little difficulty in piecing together my presentation this morning. I'm giving a presentation on Friday at the South Carolina American Plan Association Conference in North Myrtle Beach, and at that one, I'm going to be given a full synopsis of the entire project, including the mapping and the monitoring data, best management practices. So, in this, today's presentation, I didn't want to kind of double cover some of the information that my peer partners are going to be covering later in today's session. So what I intend to do is give you a little bit of background about our agency and our, the work we do in our three-county region, some background information about how this project got started, an overview of how the process moved forward, and also, as a facilitator, give you some kind of perspective of some of the challenges I thought we, you know, faced and overcame. But the big take-home is really some of the positive benefits that I think Merle's Inlet will see in the years, years ahead as a result of this project. Some information, background information about the Council of Governments' Section 208 programs. The map there kind of gives you an indication of what counties are located within each Council of Government jurisdiction. Our region includes the Georgetown County, Ori County, and Williamsburg County, and the blue, the blue region in northeast South Carolina. And we work with a lot of stakeholders within our region. They include sewer utility providers, the stormwater departments from local and county governments, state agencies such as DEHEC, and federal agencies such as USGS, research agencies like Coastal Carolina University, North Inlet, Winyabey Research Reserve, industries, and nonprofit organizations like Merle's Inlet 2020 and the Waukesha River Keeper. And when I first began at the agency about five years ago, we had an opportunity through an EPA grant to update our region's Section 208 water quality plan. And that was a great opportunity for me to really engage with a lot of these entities and develop partnerships. That was completed in the fall of 2011 and really led, those partnerships led to a lot of the work I did in Merle's Inlet and some of the other projects that I've been involved with since. So now, onto the Merle's Inlet project specifically, as partnerships kind of gelled together in my work in the Section 208 plan update, worked very closely with Dr. Susan Levis, who invited me in to participate or learn more about the volunteer monitoring program she oversees, both in, along the Waukesha River and in Merle's Inlet. And so in the spring of 2012, she, along with her partners, held an annual meeting to review the monitoring data and discuss some of the issues with, you know, the volunteer monitors and other stakeholders. And I know we all go to a lot of meetings in any given year, but I must say, this one is one I'll remember for a long time because at the end of the meeting, I was asked to become more of an integrated into their partnership and was sort of asked, can you help, you know? One of the things that was discussed at the meeting was a desire to pursue a watershed plan, and they kind of looked at me and they wanted me involved for a number of reasons. You know, our agency was used to working across multi-jurisdictions, which Merle's Inlet is, you know, Merle's Inlet, you know, transcends both into Ori County and Georgetown County. And so the process really got rolling pretty fast, actually, and timing was very critical to having the opportunity that we did. And Delaney discussed the 319 grant program, and I think it was right around that time where they, you know, DEHEC really wanted to invest in watershed planning as sort of the foundation before, you know, awarding actual implementation projects. And I actually commend them for doing that. I think it makes a lot of sense for, you know, communities to real, take, you know, take a real look at, you know, what their, you know, data is showing, trend analysis, and really knowing what their resources are on a local, state, regional level before trying to implement some of these best management practices. So in that grant, RFP, they had a provision where they wanted to award one Council of Government agency. I like to think that we would have gotten awarded for our proposal regardless of being a COG agency, but we were the COG that was awarded that grant. And a couple other provisions that were in the grant agreement itself did need to focus on the fecal coliform impairments, and that was a pretty logical thing for us, is that was the, you know, the TMDL parameter of concern in 2005. And I do think if, you know, the Merle's Inlet community and its partners moves forward and revisits the plan, they might have opportunities to look at other parameters such as nutrients or other, other issues. But for this plan, we focused just on fecal coliform. Another thing, just if you're interested in the 319 grant for, to develop a watershed plan, we were required to file the framework outlined in EPA's watershed handbook, and I think it provided a very good framework for what we wanted to do, identifying, you know, issues, you know, where you're having the water quality concerns, what BMPs are feasible, and what schedule you want, implementation schedule, how you're going to educate the public. But definitely take a look at that document early on in the planning process and even consult DEHEC on, you know, how, what they, you know, what their expectations are with regards to, you know, these requirements. And just to make sure, we give kudos to the people that were involved in, in the planning process. We had a very strong, you know, steering committee with representatives from Ori County. You'll, you'll hear from many of these folks here in their presentations, but Dave Fuss from Ori County, Tracy Jones from Georgetown County, Sue Sleds, the executive director from Merle's Inlet 2020, along with several of their board members and also their volunteer monitors, which definitely had a lot of input on this plan, very, you know, very worthwhile. We also had Steve Williams from the Earthworks Group as a GIL, GIS consultant, Coastal Carolina University, Heather Yon and Dr. Levis, and Clemson University, Dr. Dan Hitchcock, who I know is here today. But throughout, what we really wanted to do is work with all the agencies that had, you know, done work in this area before, coastal estuaries, or state agencies that had the information that we needed. We worked very closely with DEHEC's monitor, or Shellfish Management Program. Mike Pearson provided us a lot of data, a lot of insight onto the regulations of shellfish management. Also, DNR, who has an oyster shell recycling and restoration program. The sewer providers that actually gave us information about the existence of septic systems in the watershed and some of their, you know, protocols and actually gave us information on their entire sewer network infrastructure, including pump stations and whatnot. We also worked with Huntington Beach State Park, which has a lot of property in the watershed, and the town of Bluffton. Kim Jones, planner down there, stormwater manager down there, has done a plan similar to the one we, you know, developed in the May River watershed, and she was a great resource. The vigil on the bottom is a map that came out of a lot of our, two of the fundamental things that we spent a lot of time on early in the process was, you know, studying the geography of the watershed. The watershed has both urbanized areas and open space areas, and Steve did a tremendous job giving us several visuals to, to reference and look at. I kind of, you know, the saying is, you know, a picture is worth a thousand words, but with some of the mapping that Steve produced, it was really worth 100,000, you know, words because it was loaded with a lot of information, and we'll learn a lot more. I know Steve has a whole presentation on his process with this. But from there, we, in coordination with the monitoring data from DEHEC and the volunteer monitoring program, and even some special studies at Ori County, where it's pursuing on microbial source tracking, we began to prioritize the areas that we thought management efforts would be most worthwhile. So we tiered, with the 25 active DEHEC monitoring stations, we ended up prioritizing 11 of those monitoring stations and divided them into three tiers based on, you know, the real need and some feasibility in making sure we were effective with our strategies. Then we discussed the BMPs that we wanted to pursue. I do want to make note, we, we do have some location-specific BMPs, with structural BMPs, but we also have many watershed-wide BMPs, and also included some pertaining to the oyster, the oyster resources in Merle's Inlet as well, and encourage in recycling from our restaurants and local citizens, as well as encourage in restoration projects. So I do feel like our BMP recommendations were very comprehensive. Going to, I, some points I really want to make on the end are to highlight the positive outcomes of this plan and effort, but I will acknowledge a few challenges that we had along the way. I think we've, you know, found that fecal coliform is a hard parameter, really kind of, you know, hone in on and identifying, you know, there are several potential sources of bacteria in Merle's Inlet. They include wildlife, waterfowl, pet waste, there are septic systems, there's, you know, feral cat populations, so really kind of ranking out what the, you know, I, the way I felt is that, you know, right away was that this is going to take a multifaceted approach to, you know, we can't just focus in on one source and the problem will be gone. But, you know, we definitely have a lot of natural background bacteria, as I said, with wildlife and waterfowl. And also, we found that the, you know, as, the more we learned about the water quality standards, that they are, it is a very tight standard to meet, and it's based off of FDA's, an FDA standard to protect the public in consuming raw shellfish. So keep in mind, I went, attended a conference last summer in Charleston, it was a regional shellfish managers research, conference, and the consensus really was, is if you have 80% of your shellfish beds open for harvesting, that's about as good as you can expect. Currently, we have about 71% of those shellfish beds open for harvest. Other areas in South Carolina are much lower. Some watersheds have zero approved shellfish harvesting areas. So, you know, those standards are really, again, difficult. In terms of, some of these other bullet points are maybe self-critique in my own performance. Again, going back to the regulatory standards and some of the TMDL programs, you know, some committee members really took issue with, you know, how the TMDL program, you know, was functions or, you know, impacts local communities. Well, truthfully, that's really not my job. You know, I was there to, you know, analyze the, you know, the water quality issues and set forth and outline BMP recommendations. So we did get caught up in a lot of that throughout the process. Another thing is managing the project. We had about a year and a half to finish the plan, but it went by very quick, and we did a lot of analysis on the data. Again, figuring out, you know, the fecal coliform and what the trends actually were was a big, big task. But at the same time, the process, you know, really, you know, at the end of the day, we wanted to recommend BMPs, so, you know, balancing our time that way is very important. And then finding consensus on a lot of these things, you know, I'm, you know, don't, I'm now more accepting of not finding consensus, and I, the way I, I feel is, you know, if someone feels, if one partner feels like, you know, wildlife is the number one, you know, source or issue, then they can, you know, tackle that. Another partner might find pet waste to be the number one issue, and, you know, so there's a role, there's, we can work together, and I think everyone can, you know, make, you know, kind of find what they, yeah, I think is important and help improve the situation in Merle's Inlet. But going on to the positive here, I definitely think the, the process was a tremendous learning experience from all involved, and, you know, the end result is a very comprehensive plan, has a lot of information in that document, so I recommend that you look at it if you're interested. Partnerships were definitely enhanced, particularly from my perspective, at the Council of Government Agency, and, you know, even expanded. We reached out, like I said, to other agencies and, you know, throughout the state, and that was very beneficial. A point I really want to make on the volunteer monitoring program, their involvement in this process, I thought, was exceptional. I think they, they go out and sample twice a month, and I think really become, have become knowledgeable, you know, stewards and stakeholders and residents of their communities. So, and they kind of have a sense of what is, you know, you know, what they, they feel is the most important, you know, issue and strategies that they're willing to buy into. And so that, that volunteer monitoring program has been a huge benefit to the community. I definitely need to thank Steve Williams and their in-kind work to help with the GIS mapping. That was a huge part of our program, or our document. And also wanted to thank Kim Jones for her time and kind of giving us feedback and guidance from her effort in the May River watershed. And all of our partners were fully committed and on board with this project. We had a lot of meetings, some of the meetings went pretty long. Everyone attended on a, you know, the attendance percentage was very, very high, and willing to, you know, meet on extra occasions and very timely with reviewing the draft document and giving me the direction I needed before submitting it to DEHEC. In terms of next step, we understand that we are kind of just in the beginning here. We have accomplished a lot, but we have organized a steering committee comprised mostly of the entities that were involved with developing the plan, and are already meeting on a quarterly basis, is our intention. And again, going back to the timing of the, the start of the planning process, the completion of the planning process, and what we want to do moving forward, there was a 319 grant RFP for actual implementation projects, which we applied for and received to go ahead and, you know, and, you know, begin working and installing some of these demonstration projects. So we are very fortunate to have that opportunity. And kudos to Renee Williamson, who is the new executive director at the Merle's Inlet 2020. I attended their recent, you know, community meeting, and she gave a presentation on the watershed plan and did a great job, and I think she's, you know, Merle's Inlet 2020 is going to, you know, continue to be the lead entity to, you know, get, you know, make, make things happen. And I know Renee, in particular, took a like into one, one idea that we proposed in the watershed plan, which was an inlet-friendly business program to really engage the local business community on things like rainwater harvesting, tree planting, oyster shell recycling. So that, that program in itself has a lot of promise, and kudos to Renee for her initial efforts. Also, I'd like to, you know, again, thank the partners that I worked with and you'll, who you'll hear from this afternoon. And given presentations in our region over the last six months to a year, one of the first reactions I get is, does Polley's Island have a watershed plan, or does, you know, Georgetown and the Sanford River have a watershed plan? And I think, you know, I'm grateful that, you know, I think there's a potential to, you know, really do similar projects in our region, and I'm hoping there's similar interest as there was in the Merle's Inlet project. But with that, I have the website there at the bottom of the slide that you can access our plan and document, and if you're any interested, you can, I'll be here tomorrow, the rest of the day and tomorrow as well. Any questions? And I even brought the watershed plan too, so I'm happy to have you take a look.
Are there any questions today? And you will be around for our panel discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Bring up the next one for Stephen. Our next speaker is Stephen Williams.
... got involved. Our role was as a provider of professional services to help meet the local grant funding match. And like I'd mentioned before, specifically to try and provide as much spatial information as we could hydrology and hydraulic information to the steering committee as possible. And then 2013 Bell Brook Institute was involved and in 2014 the plan was approved. All right. I'm not going to get into this too briefly because Susan I know is going to have this slide and talk a little bit further about it in her presentation. But essentially, this is just a comparison between the 2006 and 2011 shellfish harvesting data and you can kind of see where there's more closures on the south end and then some on the north end of the inlet. Before I go any further, I need to basically, just for those in the room, I know this is a watershed conference, so most of you probably know what a watershed is, but for, because we're streaming live on the South Carolina Water Resources website, for the legion of fans around the world that are watching, a watershed is essentially an area where when it rains, that water is collected and eventually whatever's not cannibalized by plants, animals, or the heat of the South Carolina sun will eventually sort of convene in one general location. And so from Merle's Inlet watershed, the task was, well, what is the watershed? Is this the watershed? According to the USGS, this is the watershed, the Main Creek watershed, that's part of the HUC-12 database that's available through the National Hydrography data set. And it's a pretty decent approximation of the watershed, but it's definitely off in some areas. And part of that is because of the data that they use to define these watersheds, doesn't have a lot of high-resolution topographic data. So from a regional standpoint, this is fine, but for doing smaller localized stormwater discharge, it's not very accurate. So this is the Merle's Inlet watershed, this blue line with the LiDAR data for the watershed that was defined in the plan. I'm showing you this first before I actually show you how we got there, just so you could see the difference between it and what the USGS designation was. And you can see there's some discrepancies there on the south end and kind of along the perimeter, a little bit up there by Surfside Beach. And then down here on the bottom is the Merle's Inlet watershed with just the 2012 natural color aerial photograph and the de-hec monitoring stations out in the estuary. So what we needed to do to define this watershed initially was figure out, all right, where's the water going? I had mentioned in the previous slide what a watershed is. In areas of significant elevation change, it's relatively easy to delineate a watershed. Places like the upstate, for example, where it's fairly defined. But in the low country where elevation change is very gradual, it's very difficult to delineate them, especially in urbanized areas where you have pipes and ditches and catch basins and so forth. So what we did was take the LiDAR information and do sort of a first pass with the hydrology tools that are available to us in GIS software. And I set the threshold at about 10 acres. And that gave me a whole slew of sort of micro subwatersheds, about 815 of them. And that was good, but not, it was a little too much information. So we went through and did sort of a second pass and we set the threshold at about 50 acres and there was about 252 subwatersheds. But we needed more information than that. What you can do in the software is create accumulated flow. And it will define accumulated flow for you. And it's great figuring out sort of a generalized area of where water's going, but it's not so great figuring out things like where the water stops, whether there might be a road and the LiDAR doesn't know that there's a pipe or a catch basin or something like that there. So in this particular slide, we're looking at the Mariner Basin. And that big, thick, dark line is the eventual basin, the eventual sub-basin that was in the plan. And some of these smaller, thin, blue lines were the 50-acre threshold subwatersheds. But what we, the steering committee, were after was this specific point of entry into the estuary. All the water that reaches the estuary at that point, that's what we were looking for, for our subwatershed. So all of this area right here, and then in the slide next to it, we're basically looking at it with the aerial photograph. And for those of you who might be familiar with Merle's Inlet, this is the hospital right here. And so all this water essentially is coming down here and reaching the estuary at this point. All right. So there's some other data layers that we created as well. We contoured this. We created two-foot contours and one-foot contours. The one-foot contours are a little too ungainly to actually put up here. And then we also got stormwater infrastructure data from both Ori County, what they had available, and Georgetown County, and used that as well to figure out specifically where the LiDAR was wrong. In some places, the watersheds weren't accurate based on the stormwater infrastructure data. So in this slide, those data are displayed. The ditches are blue and there's flow arrows showing direction of flow. The pipes are in black. There's also flow arrows showing the direction of flow as well. So you can kind of see that all this stuff eventually sort of winds up through these pipes, across 17, down some ditches, and eventually it all reaches the inlet right here. And then here's just a representation of the overall mapping product that wound up making it into the watershed plan. This was that same basin, that same map, straight out of the plan. So the final sub watershed count, there's 51 subwatersheds, roughly about 2,900 acres. Of that overall was the estuary and about 6,300 acres of it was the overland flow portion reaching the estuary. And I left the slightly smaller faint dark lines, that was the 50-acre threshold, just so you could get some understanding of just how many of these fit into the overall sub watershed count that was the final amount. And then down here on the bottom, we decided to name these based upon the local landmarks, road names, things that the county might, and the community might be able to look at and say, you know, or identify themselves with as far as living within or working within a specific sub watershed of Merle's Inlet. So we talk about the community. Not only did we put some of this together, we also reached out to the community and invited them to become part of the process. So this slide right here, what we originally did is we created several very large maps and had a community gathering. They came out and put all kinds of little dots and stickers all over the map. And essentially, they were telling us, these are things that we believe might be concerns to the Merle's Inlet watershed. And so we categorized all of them, classified them, mapped them. And one of the things that came up over and over again that the community thought might be an issue was sewer. So it was one of the things that the steering committee looked at. So in this product down here on the bottom, essentially, these red dots, those are any of the places where the community thought there might be a sewer concern. And then these, all these other lines on here represent sewer lines, the dark brown squares, and brown was a color I chose on purpose, by the way, there was a reason for the brown coloration, represent the pump stations and then the sewer lines. The community also expressed siltation as a concern. So we did what we could with siltation. Unfortunately, there's very little bathymetric data that's available within the estuary. We did get the Army Corps of Engineers bathymetric drawings, and this right here just shows the channel that the Corps had information on. Here was one of the places where the community had mentioned siltation as a concern and sort of where that is in relation to the data that the Corps had, but it was fairly limited. So one of the things we also wanted to do was quantify discharge and how fast water was arriving into the estuary. And so there were several data layers that we needed in order to do this. The first of them being soils. So soils information are displayed up here in the top, mapped out. And then in addition to the soils data, there was also land use information, which we needed. There is existing land use, land cover data, which I use as the base for this plan, but it's very non-scale specific, so it's much more regional. So I took all that information and basically drew out all of these polygons, modified it based on the way it existed at the time that we got started on this project. And so land uses that were mapped were things like quarter acre residential, half acre residential lots, commercial properties, forested area, open spaces. And so the forested areas, for example, down here on the south end of the inlet, you can see are all green, whereas some of the commercial areas are all these darker browns and black colors up here on the northern end of the estuary. And there's a reason that we needed both soils and land use, and I'll get to that in just a moment. But other information that we had available to us that we felt would enhance our work was impervious data. Impervious surfaces are essentially any areas where you have building footprints, concrete, driveways, asphalt, anything where when it rains, it's not seeping into the ground. It's essentially flowing right across that surface and going to wherever the next lowest point that it can reach is. And so Ori County has a great impervious data set that we were able to get our hands on. It had building footprints, driveways, you name it. But unfortunately, in Georgetown County, that information didn't exist. So what we tried to do as best as possible is take the street center lines and create paved road impervious data based on the width of those roads from the center lines. And then we took that information and superimposed it on the land use, land cover data, which I had previously showed you in the other slide, so that we could get to a number, the curve number. What that is, is essentially an expression of the rate at which water is going to flow across a watershed. And how you get there is you take areas where you have a certain land use type and you have a certain soil type. So in this graphic, I'm basically showing you an area where there's quarter acre residential land use that has an A-type soil. And according to the TR-55 curve number table, quarter acre residential with an A-type soil is got a curve number of 61. And to put that in perspective, something like an impervious surface, that is a curve number of 98. So the higher you get on that scale, the faster the water goes. The lower you get on that scale, the more the landscape has to absorb some of that water before it's released and travels on through the watershed. All right. So this is the end product. This is the map of the 2012 curve numbers for the Merle's Inlet watershed. And as you can see, the low values being in the green and they sort of get to the higher numbers with the dark browns, really, really undeveloped here on the south end, because mostly because it's Brook Green Gardens Huntington Beach State Park. Whereas on the north end, you get some of this real high density residential and most of the development, so you get into some of the darker browns. And then we also took that same process that you've seen in the past few slides, and we applied that to the 1994 aerials as well. We wanted to, I had mentioned, we wanted to do some landscape change analysis. And that has to do with the availability of the de-hec monitoring data that we had to us. And I'm not going to get too far into that because I know Susan and Heather will cover that in a good bit more detail. But in here, this slide, I'm just showing you the 2000 aerial photos and the 1994. We also had some older aerial photos, some 1982 stuff, and then also some 1970 aerial photos. But other than just for reference, for something for us to look at, we didn't really use it because the 1994 tied in real well with almost a 20-year period of data that we had. So we, from our land use change analysis, we went with the 94. And so here's that map right there. This is essentially the watershed with a percent change in curve number between the 94 and the 2012. And so you can see there's a significant amount here along the Highway 17 business corridor and then where some of the residential development is, and then up here on the north end as well. And we also looked at some of these watersheds because I had mentioned several slides ago that we were trying to define discharge into the estuary. So some of these watersheds, there's no real accumulated flow. These are just long linear watersheds that kind of hug the edge of the estuary. And when it rains, the water in these watersheds just right on into the estuary. There's no real accumulation of flow in those. I know, I know, you're not supposed to have tables in a presentation, but we're going to be a little rebellious with this slide. And this, my fellow steering committee members can also defer to this as well. When they have tables in their presentations, all of this information was eventually geared towards providing some tabular data, which is the discharge rate. So we took all of these curve numbers and you can use that to help calculate discharges. And so that information I provided to Tracy Jones, who was on our steering committee, and she calculated some of these discharge rates for us. But, and James Dean is up there because he's, you know, he's the American Rebel, right? So on this top slide, you're looking at the subwatersheds again. And then these thick blue lines are essentially the time of concentration flow paths. What that means is that in this sub watershed, for example, when it rains, it's the furthest distance that water that doesn't get cannibalized, like I mentioned earlier, is going to travel before it reaches the estuary. And so that blue line is the travel path. And we use the LiDAR as well as using the stormwater infrastructure data that we had so that we could determine what those time of concentration flow paths were. And then, we're not going to focus too much on that. But essentially, if you look at the plan, and you're welcome to look at the plan after this, you can see all the different curve numbers for those basins and the discharge rates and then the lengths of those flow paths. Okay. And so the last couple of slides, we took a lot of that information that we put together and basically synthesized it into some products that we could put out there for public consumption. First one, the one on the top, which you've seen previously, is just, it's got the commercial and the shellfish harvesting beds are plotted, as well as the de-hec monitoring stations and our percent change in land use over the roughly 20-year period, as well as the subwatersheds. And then this bottom slide, we have those subwatersheds, which we had prioritized. And I won't get too far into the prioritization because I know some of the other presentations will cover it. But essentially, what we were looking at is, and what we were trying to determine is, several of these de-hec monitoring stations were exceeding the geometric mean, which Susan and Heather will discuss in a little more detail in their presentations. And we were trying to figure out, okay, well, if we're going to implement some best management practices for these watersheds, then we need to prioritize, which ones do we go after first? If we get subsequent grants, which ones are we going to make these improvements on? And so what I've got is I've got these callouts for each of the different monitoring stations. And then the watershed or the sub watershed which most impacts that monitoring station is the first one indicated. And it probably doesn't translate exceptionally well up here on this projected presentation. But the ones where we were going to focus, most of our efforts were essentially called out in red. And so the priority, the priority subwatersheds are highlighted in red, and then the ones for secondary consideration are highlighted in yellow. And so just to conclude, I just would like to thank our steering committee. I had a wonderful group of steering committee members that I got to work with. Dan Newquist, who you just heard, Sue Sleds, the former executive director of Merle's Inlet 2020, Susan Levis with Coastal Carolina Waukama Watershed Academy, Dave Fuss, Ori County Stormwater, Tracy Jones, Georgetown County Stormwater, Heather Young, also with Coastal Carolina University, Gary Weinrich, happily retired environmental engineer, Sandra Bundy with Merle's Inlet 2020, and Jim Wilkie, also MI 2020, Dan Hitchcock with Clemson Extension, and Mr. Lee Hewitt. And lastly, Steve Strickland, the owner of the Earthworks Group, who, without volunteering our services for this project, our involvement in it wouldn't be possible.
Do you have any questions for Steve? About information?
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're loading the next presentation. I'll introduce Heather Young. She's with Coastal Carolina University.
All right, folks, my talk is much less technical, so everybody can just sit back and relax. If you guys can't hear me, just wave your hands and I'll know to speak up, so don't be afraid. I'm going to be talking about how our, you've heard briefly about our volunteer monitoring program and how important that was into really getting this process going. So I'm going to be talking about how the stewardship that our volunteer monitors have towards Merle's Inlet have really, in the last couple of years, pushed forward management And doing a Google image search can always be a very dangerous and fun thing to do, but I took a chance and I just wanted to run home the point that in Merle's Inlet, it really does revolve around the water. So you can see a very dominant theme here with just about every picture that shows up has something to do with the inlet. And that's just kind of the colloquial term that refers to the marsh, the open water. That's how they refer to their inlet. It is their inlet. They have a very strong ownership over the inlet, everybody who lives in Merle's Inlet. So the cultural identity and economic driver of Merle's Inlet really is tied closely in with the inlet and the health of the inlet itself. It's an important resource for finfish and shellfish opportunities. It is known as the seafood capital of South Carolina, and you can have your choice of seafood restaurants that look out over the wonderful marsh. It is also important for ecotourism and an important destination for water-based recreational activities for locals and visitors alike. So now we're going to just go over a little bit of details on the volunteer monitoring program. This was initiated in 2008, and I cannot emphasize enough that collaboration is the key to having a successful monitoring program. So we are very fortunate with our monitoring program. We have Ori County and Georgetown County Stormwater that are primary supporters of this project. And in Merle's Inlet, we work heavily with Merle's Inlet 2020, which is a community group, and they help us gather up our volunteers. And the volunteers are fantastic, and I've gone through the old data sheets. Many of them have been doing this for now six years because they feel that much of a connection to the inlet. We currently sample eight sites, six of which are land-based sites and two of which are located in the inlet. And I'm just going to point out, these red arrows, those are the sites that, over the years, have tended to be about a magnitude higher than the other sites. And the orange arrow is one that is kind of borderline and every once in a while reaches that level. And I only have that there. We're not going to talk about data, but I have that there because when I started in April, well, when I gave a presentation in April of 2012, I had been at Coastal for less than two months, but I had taken those two months and talked a lot to the volunteers. And I got a kind of a feeling of where they were at. So at that time, they had been sampling for four years. Can you back that up? And this is where they were when I had started in 2012. They were at the now what stage. They'd been sampling for four years. They knew what sites were consistently high, and they were ready for something to happen. They just didn't know what, or how, or when. They didn't know the process to follow. So I gave a presentation. I'm not going to repeat the presentation, but I'm going to show some of the key slides that helps kind of spark the interest, light the fire. So you guys have seen this map already. We just showed the increase in some of the restricted areas closed to shellfish harvesting here, 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 and right there. And many of these sites are actually very close to our volunteer monitoring sites. We also discussed how changing land use is going to impact the ability of the inlet itself to provide those same resources that they heard about from their parents or their grandparents. And this is just an aerial from the 50s. And I know the resolution isn't the greatest, but you can see it's pretty undeveloped, nice and rural. And in 2011, it had become a very developed watershed. It is no longer that small fishing village of days past, and you can't manage it as though it were. And I kind of felt like after, as I was building my presentation, that it was all doom and gloom because sometimes water quality can just feel that way. It just, you want to end with something happy. So I ended with a case study. I used to work for the Long Island Sound Study. I ended with a case study where I talked about a project where there was a volunteer monitoring program, a community group called the Hempstead Harbor Protection Committee, which is set up much like Merle's Inlet 2020. And they have a very strong collaborative partnership with the municipalities, and they worked strongly with the State Natural Resources Agency to do many stormwater improvement projects. We did habitat restoration projects. They did some sewer treatment plan upgrades. And at the end of the day, once they had their three years of data that's required for the National Shellfish Sanitation Program, they were able to open 2,500 acres of water to shellfish harvesting, which is very impressive because right here is Queens. This is a very urbanized area. It's been developed for hundreds of years. So that's kind of where I ended it. I sat down and just let everybody start talking. So everything that you guys have heard up to this point from Dan and from Steve really started because the volunteers requested it. They were the ones, we had talked to Merle's Inlet 2020 about needing a watershed plan, but it was the volunteers who requested it. They wanted it to happen. And that's the wonderful power of our volunteer program, is we had that luncheon and they had this great discussion, but it wasn't just them talking. It was them talking with our stormwater managers because our stormwater managers are always in attendance. So it wasn't just a group of talking people, what can we do? It was a group of engaged, knowledgeable volunteers talking with the stormwater managers about what was realistic and what they could start working on. So the first outcome you've already kind of heard about is the watershed plan. And the watershed plan is wonderful and it's fantastic, and that's what's going to open up opportunities for funding into the future. What the volunteers are going to really enjoy and see benefit from, because it's going to be on the ground, they're going to see it, is going to be the implementation that was just funded. And we're only two and a half years out from that meeting where we talked about potential ways to move forward and what we could do in Merle's Inlet to improve the water quality situation. So in two and a half years, they have a watershed plan and implementation is underway. One other outcome from that same April meeting was the volunteers heard about a tool that Coastal was developing and was piling up in other areas of Ori County. And it was to look at source organisms of fecal bacteria. And they thought it sounded like a wonderful tool. And within a couple months, Ori County had a project implemented and starting on the ground. And I'm not going to go over that data because my colleague is going to be giving a presentation on that data in the next session. So I'm just letting you know that, again, that is another project that really came about because of the volunteers' request. And there is more QPCR tracking that will, source tracking that will be occurring in Georgetown County. They're going to be doing some potential source tracking in some of the priority subwatersheds that were identified in the watershed plan and that are also subwatersheds that the volunteers And the volunteers, bless their hearts, they've been doing this for six years now. They wanted to do more. So they embarked on upstream sampling to try and identify hotspots within some of their subwatersheds. And this was really organized and run by the volunteers. They set up, they used the sub watershed layers that Steve had. They set up sampling sites that were upstream of their normal volunteer monitoring sampling site. They used the established protocols that we had for volunteer monitoring. They used the Calaskan gel plates. And this is actually something that's very similar to projects done by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. They do these types of projects to identify hotspots before they do the more expensive testing. And the volunteers sampled in four subwatersheds primarily, and then every once in a while, because they're volunteers and they were gung ho, they did a couple extra sites because they wanted to prove to themselves that ponds were effective treatment options. And it got the point home. They understood it. And I think they finally got a better understanding of the variability of bacteria data by doing this because they actually also did some of the data workups as well. So just final thoughts, collaborative approach is integral, at least in our program, and I think can be used as a pilot for other programs around the state and potentially further. Because without the collaborative nature and without the strong volunteers and the sense of stewardship that they felt over the data and the inlet, we would not be giving all of these presentations today. There would not be an implementation project coming underway at this time. There would be implementation eventually. But it really is because of them that it's happening on the timescale that it is. And our volunteer, the way our volunteer program is set up, it provides a very good platform for them to voice their ideas and their concerns and to talk to people about what can actually happen.